A proud native of the city of Atlanta, a graduate of Atlanta Public Schools. I'm also a proud graduate of Boston College where I majored in computer science and I have over forty years' experience in information systems as well as process improvement. Basically for my platform is real simple. I think with thirty-one percent of APS kids reading on grade level by the eighth grade, twenty-five percent on grade level in math by the eighth grade, I think we need to utilize Clark, Morehouse, Spelman, and eight U Center students to tutor our kids after school. I think it would be great to leverage our tax dollars to provide job opportunities for our vocational ed students. And I think that if we alleviate some of the underlying burdens financially of kids, we will be in a position for better outcomes because there's a lot of trauma surrounding these kids before they even get to the schoolhouse. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, one-minute opener.
All right, you ready? All right. Hey, good evening. Michelle Olympiadas, District Three Representative. I'm looking for one last term, which will be another four years. This will be my third term. I have three children, two of which graduated this past year out of APS. I still have a daughter who is scheduled to graduate in 2026. I've been an active parent for sixteen-plus years, serving as PTA President, Local School Council, Grading Cluster Advisory before it became Midtown, and doing the best that I can do. And I would just like to have one more time. I still think there's a lot that can be done. I'm very excited about Dr. Battle serving as our interim superintendent and look forward to working with the board for as long as I can to steward in a new superintendent and would like to ask for your support. And like I said, I'm not looking for any more than one more term. And I think that's where I am.
All right, thank you. Now we'll go via Zoom. Erica Mitchell, sixty-second opener.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Erica Mitchell. I am a current Board Member, Commissioner of the Board. I proudly serve the community that has our parents help to build and that is today. They live in Carter High School, and that was one of the first African-American communities that was built. From there, as community advocacy and being involved, I want to have to serve our work. Now, I am in the Carter High School area, serving the latest in mental health cluster. I have been an active worker, a public servant. I am also a mother of two children that attend Atlanta Public Schools. I believe that as a former member, I would like to continue to work to spur and to make sure that every child receives an equitable and quality education. Our children are future, and I'm here to continue to serve them in that past.
Thank you. And lastly. Mrs. F? Okay, hey.
How are you?
Good.
Hey, the candidate we're talking about is a colleague of ours, a paper fellow of the other, which I actually didn't even talk about, but I'm interested in you. I attended that, and I am a parent, recently, from a national school one to graduate, and more than three years, shared a whole college of staff doctors, and now I will be a part of Metro Metro superintendent. I'm interested in getting back to you better, I think, with our resources to our school and superintendent side, right? Focus the strategy, uniquely focused, way to focus on their needs and their interests. But it's not unique to acquire first, and acquire discipline, and acquire experience. But I think what it does need time, and it's your last of the school, that we can find a little system that's not city and related to, and order.
Thank you. So each candidate will, once again, receive sixty seconds to respond to the questions. If I feel as if we're not getting through the questions quick enough, I'm going to turn that into thirty seconds for rapid response to give the audience ample opportunity to ask their questions as well. My next question, or first question, will actually go to Erica Mitchell. Erica Mitchell, and this will be for all the candidates, but Erica Mitchell will be first on this one. Though brilliant, most students, at around sixty-one percent in our district, cannot read on a grade level. Students who cannot read on a grade level often find themselves getting into trouble and avoid reading, to avoid reading in class. It becomes an intimidating situation. I want you to explain your understanding of the school district's role in the school-to-prison pipeline and share your strategy to end it with an exacting or various exacting policies.
Yes, thank you for that question, Mr. Rich. I was aware of the literacy rates coming onto the board, including James R. From there, I went out to sort of what can I just do, or answer editing, I would edit the word, to help post that app. The school-to-prison pipeline is something that is affecting students. If you're not reading by third grade, they decide and have smart rocks to go into progress in a prison because there's no, because it limits your ability to be able to understand, comprehend, and so you're going to survive in a just living. One of the two things that I did regarding on this, one, I looked at a trauma program first. A trauma program, you find, I would attack people by students around the mental health and the passing, and we can make ways that we can support them. Because you, because what I found is that the student is that with our trauma, they can have, so that was one of them. The other one was restorative justice practice. Restorative justice is how our students too, deal with conflict resolution, finding positive ways to deal with conflict through, uh, our behavior support, counseling, just.
Erica, hold on, the sound is going out. Her time, okay.
Oh, my God, I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Yes, so we got to have a warning system for that, so I apologize. I'll make sure we do that in the future. Okay. All right. Mrs. F, same question.
Thank you, Dr. Rich. Well, the, if we don't get better, we are not, there's not dedicated for that. There is no path to order through the curriculum if you can't keep your work through your third grade. There are no, any path, there are no words in that, anyway, not a path to the norm. Well, why do I need to do, I need to get focused on their, they go on conference strategy, we can make a difference. As a matter of fact, I'm here right now, and actually, the reason I'm not with you is I'm in San Francisco at a conference presenting the results for the work in Marietta that my organization, we're in for life, is in project managing, where we've had double-digit gains in growth in literacy. Over five times the rate of growth in the metro area are happening in Marietta because everybody is focused on literacy. We've got the, we train the teachers, we train the instructional coaches, train the assistant principal, train the principal, train the bus driver. Everyone understands that we're having a comprehensive, balanced, space instruction strategy for literacy, and that puts kids on a path for greatness. If we get literacy right, we're going to see the rest of the district come around.
Her time. All right. Michelle.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was thinking Reynard and then me, but I got you. Yes, I have to agree with, with the fellow candidates. Third-grade reading is a must, and I have been advocating for third-grade reading for over ten years at Morningside Elementary School when I was working with the PTA there. We implemented Orton-Gillingham, which is a methodology for reading instruction that showed improvement not just for kids who needed it, but even for the kids who were doing great, and we saw growth across the board. I got you. So I would totally ask that we, as a district, look at Orton-Gillingham. We have rolled out foundations, K-32. I'm not sure about where the professional development is there for the K-32 teachers across the district, and that's a bit of a concern.
Thank you. Mrs. Johnson.
Yes, with respect, with respect to the numbers, the real numbers as of right now, seventy-eight percent of African-Americans make up Atlanta Public Schools. Those seventy-eight percent students make up ninety-one percent of our school suspensions right now. No one is questioning that on the school board. No one's putting together strategies to defeat that. And these same students that are suspended are more than likely, when kicked out of school, to be harboring, to be more likely to be in the criminal justice system. So this is what I would like to do. I would like to utilize, like I said before, Spelman, Clark, Morehouse, Georgia State students that are majoring in education, who have to have required student-teacher hours to fulfill those required teacher hours, tutoring our students after school, at our Boys and Girls Club, YMCA's, and our City of Atlanta Park and Recreation Centers. The more times they have available, who want to learn, to have this additional enrichment that's available right now.
Time. Thank you, sir.
Let them do it.
My next question, I'm going to start with you, Michelle, on this one, so I've questioned directly to current leadership, but it's open to everyone. This time next year, the board will have to appoint a new superintendent for APS. This is a challenging dynamic. You have a turnaround issue dealing with the school district, over half of its schools is on the governor's school takeover list. Hiring the next superintendent requires a deep experience and deep skill. What specific qualifications do you have managing an executive, operating, a large budget, writing policy for kids, and should the current board choose? Or should the newly-elected board choose the next superintendent? So it's two questions in there. The first, I'm going to clear that up again. The first is to state or restate your qualifications for operating budget and policy. And second, should the right-now board make the decision on superintendent, or should the newly-elected board make the decision? And Michelle, I'll start with you.
Okay, I appreciate that. Can I start with a second question and then go back to the first?
Yes.
Is that fair? Okay. So our timeline is basically a school year, so that we can go through the proper channels of finding a firm that we believe, which is, it's great this, this time, we actually interviewed firms, to come to us so that we could try to figure out who to find would be the right fit and discuss with them who exactly we're looking for, or what type of, I got you, what type of candidate we're looking for. So we have given it the school year, so July one is when we would hire, if that's fair. Okay? And then back to your first question. Looking for the right candidate, Atlanta is very, I don't even know what the right, I'm going to get the red card, I know. Atlanta is a very difficult city.
Time.
Yeah, it's a difficult city.
All right. Michelle, same, Erica, excuse me, same question.
I'm going to start with the first one, let me state my qualifications. I've served on the Policy Committee for APS since January of 2018. I had the opportunity to write policies to serve students, around trauma from practices, restorative justice, domestic violence trafficking, anti-racism policies, and I looked through policy in a lens on how do they serve students to get the outcomes that we want. I've also served as the Chair of Policy and Resolutions for the National School Board Association, Council of Urban Boards of Education, and National Black Council of School Board Members. Budget. I had the opportunity to receive a certificate from Georgetown University in Educational Finance. I am now taking a course around how to best use our ESF funds. I have not sat on the Budget Committee for APS, but I support the Budget Committee and the decisions that we fund schools first to serve our students. Next, superintendent. The superintendent search is, will be underway in January.
But it's important, I do want to get your answer on the record. Which answer is it, that current board, new board?
It will, it will have to be the new board because of the election cycle. Everyone is not guaranteed their reelection seat, so however the election outcome is, with the timeframe that we have, it will be the incoming board in January.
Reynard.
Just now, Board Member Mitchell indicated that she has not served on the Budget Committee, but she has voted for the budgets for the past five years. Well, that's telling. Show me your budget, show me your org chart, and I will show you where your priorities are with children. Right now, only forty percent of APS budget goes towards children, sixty percent still goes towards administrators. Okay? So that tells you where your priorities are. With respect to my qualifications, I have over four decades of experience in IT software development, in which I have managed multi-million dollar, tens of million-dollar projects with hundreds of people reporting in a matrix-managed organization. With respect to whether or not the current school board or the next school board should select the next superintendent, we do have an interim superintendent in place now for that same reason. I think it would be great for the next school board, who has to deal with the next superintendent, to select that individual, and I think that individual who has had a background in looking at the education of the system would be good.
Erica, because Reynard did mention you directly, you get thirty seconds rebuttal.
Yes. No, I have not served on the Budget Committee, but I have been an active board member in prioritizing and building out parameters for our budget allocation. There's two things I do want to mention. When we look at our budget, we advocate, we can't tell, but we can advocate for our administration to fund the priorities first, which are students, which are schools. Yes, we have a high pension that has to be paid out that takes a big portion of our budget, but that happened through decades before I was even elected.
Thank you. Mrs. F, the original question, back to you. Mrs. F?
Thank you, Dr. Rich, and this is a critical question, and let me just give folks the understanding of the landscape. We're going to be looking to hire our fourth superintendent in about four years. So one of my qualifications, I used to be superintendent of a full-town school, the system roughly twice the size of Atlanta Public Schools, and I work every day with district superintendents across metro Atlanta, so I'm pretty, pretty, pretty aware of the challenges of the job. But I know that the board makes the job undoable when it gives the superintendent a dozen priorities. Instead of just focusing on one or two, the job becomes, the job becomes, it requires magical thinking, I think a superintendent can do it all. But so just, just by way of reflection, so we, Dr. Chris Darpan was, was let go because we thought Dr. Herring was going to be answered. Dr. Herring is let go, and we pay out most of her budget, and now we're looking for our fourth superintendent. If we don't get this right, we're going to be back in two years, having these same conversations again. So I think as we reach in this, voters look at this moment, let's make sure that we choose folks that can get the superintendent right.
Thank you. I'm going to have to change the rules slightly to thirty-second responses for the sake of time to make sure we have Q and A with the audience. We do have someone from Equity and Education who will go around with the microphone. If you could, go ahead and get ready, just hold your hand up, and a team member will get to you. Thirty seconds for this round, fifteen seconds for direct rebuttal if you mention a candidate by name. I'm going to start the first question back to Mr. Zeph. The question is, APS sits in the nation's most economically inequitable city by multiple surveys. Our schools mirror the city's inequity in achievement for those who are in poverty, neurodivergent, as it is called. As a board member, how do you build support from constituents across Atlanta who do not believe in equitable principles in the first place? How will you create equity allies on the board to vote with you? Mrs. F? Ken Zeph.
Thank you, Dr. Ritchie. I mean, this is, this is the question, right? How do we build momentum? We have enough money in Atlanta Public Schools to do the good work for kids, but we have to have the courage to be able to say, hey, some kids are going to need additional resources to get the job done. I think we can do this if we get resources out of the central office. It doesn't have to be a lose-lose. This can be, we don't have to lower the bar, we can raise the bar for all kids. Right now, the central office budget is growing twenty percent a year. If we take those resources and give those out to our schools that need the resources, we can make dramatic change for kids.
All right, thank you. Erica Mitchell.
Same question, I'm sorry.
Same question, yes.
Oh, okay. Can you repeat the question again?
Yes. All right. As a board member, how do you build support from constituents across Atlanta who do not believe in equitable principles? How will you create equity allies on the board to vote with you?
One of the good things that we have done as a board was the equity policy that I helped to write. Around that policy, we did a lot of engagement with community to, to, one, to have them understand the importance of equity, to educate them about equity and the work that we will begin doing at that time. So we will continue that work as a full board, and as a board member, I strive to make sure that kids, our district is equitable, but that comes in so many different departments.
Reynard Johnson, same question.
Just now, Board Member Mitchell mentioned that with respect to equity, you want to talk about equity, right now, in the city of Atlanta, is the most inequitable in socially, kids are not able to move. To solve some of these issues that are underlying with APS, we need to deal with the socioeconomic factors behind APS. Why can't Martha be free for APS kids, K through twelve? It's free in Washington, DC, okay? Why can't its Infinity WiFi be free for APS kids?
Time.
Well, talk about equity, let's talk about equity.
And even though he mentioned an opponent's name, he did not say anything derogatory.
Excuse me?
So I'm making a point for the record? No, no, I'm making a point for the record, I'm not talking specifically to you, I'm generally making a point for the record. Even though he mentioned the opponent's name, he did not, yes, sir, I understand. He did not say anything that was contrary to the opponent. I'm saying that for the record, for those who are watching us via Facebook and may have a question to why I did not allow to go to Erica Mitchell, okay? Michelle, thirty seconds.
Okay, we're good? We're sure?
Yes, we're sure.
Okay, I'm just making sure. Yeah, so, I mean, just to be clear, I mean, we haven't had third grade, third graders reading above thirty percent of our kids for more than a decade, and something has to be drastically done. And I spoke with Dr. Battle and Lisa Bracken about changing the way that we use our budget so that we could better address how to educate teachers to, at least K through two, to teach children how to read.
All right, time.
Thank you.
Okay, now we want to open it up for the audience, very important part of any debate. And so raise your hand, a team member will come to you, candidates will have thirty seconds to respond.
All right, so we have our first question from the audience, and I'm going to go ahead and hand you the mic, make sure it's a question, not a comment.
Absolutely, thank you, panelists, and thank you, Dr. Ritchie.
May I ask that you come up so we can see you? I'm sorry, you're in the dark.
No problem at all. Is this better?
It's much better.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Sterling Johnson Partnership for Southern Equity. Candidate Johnson made reference to some of the disparities in student disciplinary outcomes right now in Atlanta Public Schools. And taking it further, black students are the only subgroup, racial subgroup, overrepresented in student disciplinary outcomes in Atlanta Public Schools. Given that the APS discipline website makes it clear that the strict rules of evidence as applied in court do not apply in a disciplinary hearing for students, this includes the right to discovery, to prepare defense, or gathering any evidence that will be used to prosecute or against their child, or how you prepare a defense against that. Given where students and families sit in the disciplinary process, it may also be difficult for them to obtain evidence or call witnesses to help exonerate their child from any charge. So with these disparities being existent, how would you be in support of amending the student disciplinary policy to help better protect or promote equity for black students?
And this is specifically for one or for all?
For all.
Okay, thank you. Michelle, you can go ahead.
You start with me? Okay.
It seemed like you were starting directly to you.
You're fine, you're fine. I do want to say that we did change our policy recently with respect to discipline. I'm not a policy girl, I'm a budget girl, so I just want to be really clear on that. But we do recognize the fact that there's, there are challenges in our schools with respect to our students, and with, I don't want to use COVID as an excuse, because I think the excuse was before that, but there's an opportunity where we need to change what we're doing.
Time.
And I got the red light.
All right. Ken, same question.
Thanks for that. And look, I, I mean, it's heartbreaking, I've sat in tribunals, I know how heartbreaking it is. We have to get to this issue before it ends up in that case, and I think it's about supporting wording in the classroom. Why do kids, why do we see discipline issues? Why, why do kids not feel a part? Why do not see themselves in the curriculum? It's because our core instruction, coming back to literacy, coming back to supporting teachers, putting more resources in the classroom. When a kid has a better experience in the classroom, when a teacher has the freedom to engage, we're going to see better outcomes, we're going to see kids being plugged into the work.
Thank you. Reynard Johnson.
Starting next year is by understanding that the state has mandated that all school districts in the state of Georgia test students for dyslexia, which also has symptoms of kids acting out, which also can lead to disciplinary issues. I want to know what policies we're going to put in place so that teachers are better prepared to deal with our students who have reading abnormalities or on a spectrum? Because that's going to be very important, because we may have more challenged students who may have made, who may be acting out in class, that will cause disciplinary issues to add up.
Time. Erica Mitchell.
Yes. To the gentleman that from Southern Equity, I just want to say I do support amending our disciplinary policy, and I would like to work with you closely to identify areas that have opportunity to change and to make sure those areas are serving the students of Atlanta Public Schools. Secondly, I would like to say intervention on a school level. Anytime we have a disciplinary action that comes before the board, I always ask what interventions have been done to prevent it from coming to the board, to prevent it to go into a tribunal. And one of the things that we found out is that we have all these.
All right. Here's what we're going to do. We've got time for two more questions, and then we have to go to our next at large.
Okay, so I know everyone wants to ask a question, definitely understand that. We have a live stream going on right now on YouTube where you can also drop questions, we'll see if we can get to some of those. You can DM them on IG, but unfortunately, we don't have the time. There's no way I can say no to this elder who's standing up here right now. So I'm going to let her ask her question, okay? And then we'll, okay, all right, okay.
Hey, allow, just allow me just for a second. I highly encourage the candidates to remain in place afterwards because there's no way to mitigate this in the timeframe we have available. I do apologize. Madam?
Ma'am, would you mind coming up here for me?
Yes, thank you for having her walk up, thank you.
Hi, as a former teacher in Atlanta Public School and employee for the U.S. Department of Education and Civil Rights Division, I would like to know what your plan is for all of the thirty-one schools that are slated to be sold in the city of Atlanta by the board, and how can those facilities be repurposed for use in our community for the things that we need? For example, parent education, children's literacy, forward-thinking mathematics programs, we have needs for them, but they are selling those properties off, and we need to have, keep them in the community. We'd like to know what, what you would do to make sure those properties are kept in the community and open for programs for children of color or parents.
And remember, this is for everybody, am I correct? For all candidates, the question?
That's right.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Erica Mitchell, we'll start with you.
Yes, I am a big component of community incubators, community centers. I advocated with this, with my community, especially with Towns Elementary School and other buildings that we have that are vacant. One of the things I will say, you said thirty-one schools are being sold, I believe we have sixteen properties, as of yesterday, that were, that were on our list for disposable or in deemed surplus. So we're not selling the thirty-one schools, there are sixteen properties. Within that six, those sixteen properties, there are some that would never be of use to Atlanta Public Schools.
All right. Ken Zeph, same question.
Thank you, ma'am, and thanks for your years of service, both at the state and local and federal level. Your question's right on, these are community assets. These don't belong to the school board, the community pays for them, the community should have access to them and be able to use them. We can do things like student-based, student-based health centers that have been really, have been really productive. We can have community centers, we can do partnerships with nonprofits, but the most important thing is we must have community voice. Community asset, the community should have a say in how it gets, how it gets used.
Thank you. Reynard Johnson.
I, I think with the multitude of nonprofits and NGOs we have here in the city of Atlanta, we have well enough opportunities for these nonprofits to come in and do work in our communities in partnership with APS without necessarily selling our properties. I mean, city of Atlanta, we sell properties for one dollar, for one dollar, in the city of Atlanta. Why can't we do that with APS to some nonprofits who could use those properties for after-school programs, or enrichment, or medical use for our students?
Time. And Michelle.
Thank you. I'm glad I get to go last instead of first. I've been talking about this for more than five years. I have insisted that we take a look at our underutilized properties and try to figure out a way to work with. look at our underutilized properties, and try to figure out a way to work with folks like Invest Atlanta, or Urban Housing, to figure out what to make the best use of how we can support communities. And I think it's very, very important for us to take a look at that, because we have a lot of property, we're the largest landowners in the city.
All right, time for one more question from the audience.
All right, we have time for all my questions, I see you with your hand up, come up to the front. Okay, and if I can just have you stand up here to pose your questions to the candidates.
Hi.
Come a little bit closer.
As you may know, many of our students are located--
Would you mind to come a little bit closer so you're in the light, so people can see you? Thank you.
As you may know, many of our students are located in communities that are living under food apartheid. For those that are unaware, food apartheid is defined as a system of segregation that divides those with access to an abundance of nutritious food, and those who have been denied that access due to the racist and oppressive systems that create inequitable food environments. So we're discussing equity in education, and I think we would all agree that includes access to healthy food and green spaces. How do you intend to support the farm-to-school programs in Atlanta that aim to create a more equitable school food system for our students?
All right, Reynard, we'll start with you.
Well, one way we could start that farm-to-school table program would be to get away from the impediment that currently exists, is if we were to grow vegetables and fruit on our properties, right now, can we feed it to a child? Does FDA say we cannot? We need to get around some of our legislative governmental restraints, so that we can utilize some of our own green space to grow our own fruits and vegetables for our own families, for our own kids.
All right, thank you. Michelle?
So I just want to be really clear, we, as a board, recently decided not to continue with our current nutrition provider, and we want to bring things in-house, to Reynard's point, so that we can figure out where we want to go, and find local food to help our, to help our schools, and do things in-house, and not have it be so cookie cutter, so to speak.
Okay, thank you. Ken.
Thanks for the question, and you know, food, it doesn't focus, it doesn't have nutrition, it doesn't have sustenance, it's hard to say focus on education. This happens, in order to get to where we need to go here, we have to push decision-making down to the local level. This is, communities are going to have specific solutions that meet the needs of their community, it can't be the central office, treating, growing, growing, making more decisions. The more that we give the folks on the ground, the go-teams, the principals, the teachers, the decision-making, the better things will happen.
Erica.
Yes, I would like to start off by saying that if you visit my website, www.EricaW Mitchell com, I have the food pantry program that I put together, and also the food backpack program, that allow our students to have food, supplement food to take home through the weekend, the food pantry program allow them to have a pantry in the schools where they have access to fresh food, fruits and vegetables. The partnership with Gutter, which I brought to APS, would help support that, and you also see those pantries and grocery stores that have, have been available to go--
Thank you, I know it ain't easy. All right, this is the closing, everyone will receive 60 seconds, all right, 60 seconds for the closing. I will begin with Ken Zef.
Thanks Dr. Ritchie, first, let me just say, take a moment to thank all the folks putting this together, these things are labors of love, and I wish I could be with you all, because I can feel the energy coming through the Zoom, and it's magical, because in order to get the APS that we need, it's going to take everyone's collective effort. It is not just the folks that you're, that you're talking to on this call, and I'm glad that everyone's engaged, but it's going to take, you know, as Mayor Dickens says, Atlanta's community project. I'm in this race because I think we can, this is that time that we can make change for our kids. I've seen it in other school systems, I've seen it when we were at Fulton County, if we come together, we get focused on a strategy, we admit that we don't have all the answers in the central office, we push out decision-making to schools, we get focused on a comprehensive literacy strategy, we can build a system that our kids have never seen before. It's a system that our kids deserve, because look, if we don't get this right for our kids now, we're going to be back here in the next couple of years, repeating the cycle, now's our chance to make change. Thank you.
Thank you. Reynard Johnson.
Yes, earlier, my opponent, or Board Member Mitchell indicated that she's been part of the equity audit. Well, right now, 95% of our contracts go, do not go to minority vendors, they go to white companies, only 5% of our contracts go to minority vendors. What I would like to do is this, that 1/2 of 1% sales tax we pay for our East Floss, if the scope of work of that contract has anything to do with the skill set of our vocational ed students, let's put in the RFP, these companies we require to hire these kids as an apprentice. Let's give these kids jobs, because giving these kids a job will make a big difference in the outcomes of that one of them being interested in education, but for furthering their own career. These are out of the box ideas, but if we continue going along the same pathway, I have a funny feeling we will get the same results, I'm a systems thinker, let's start looking at education as a systems approach, and let's deal with data-driven decisions, okay? Let's have a school bus mounted on every bus, okay? Why can't we do that? There are a lot of things that are not everywhere here in Atlanta, we need to solve those problems now.
Thank you. Michelle.
May I ask you to ask the question one more time, I'm sorry--
It's actually not a question, it's your closing, 60-second closing.
Just for me to close, okay, I appreciate that, I totally missed that. I just, I would like to run one more time, it's taken a lot, it's a very heavy lift, being on the school board, and working with eight and the superintendent to try to move things forward, and I'll be very straight about that. And I would just like one more chance to see if we can make better improvements. I think we have come a long way over the past five years, and I would like to see us move, move better. I think we have a lot to do, and I'm, I got you, I got you Reynard. Oh yeah, the 30% literacy, thank you for the yellow sign, the 30% literacy is a huge lift, but we've finally implemented a K through 2 program, and we need to stay diligent about how we're addressing academics, and then how we're going to address enrichment as well, I think is very important, and how to unravel a very big budget, budget, we're the second largest in the state.
Tom.
Thank you.
Erica Mitchell.
Yes, I want to, I am running for reelection, to continue to develop policies that serve our students first, to provide educational opportunities, more support services and wraparound services, quality and stable leadership in our schools, and to make sure that every child, every student receives a quality and equitable education. I can't do it alone, I depend on our board members for us to work together, and making sure that our district has stable leadership, stable leadership in regards to the superintendent, that they could focus on educating our students first. Education is our core, our core pillar of a school district, and that's the most important thing that a person can have, that no one can take away from them, is their education. And I want to continue to serve the students of Atlanta Public Schools.
Seeking public office is a noble venture. Being a public official is one of the most difficult jobs on the planet. I would like for all of us to give every candidate a round of applause for being here today. Thank you. We will take a two-minute break, and we are going to get started with our at-large candidates for round two. Make sure you get the candidates too, or you're getting the candidates.
Mm-hmm. I hate to be your shot, I hate to be on--
Why? 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 You should have started like this. All at-large candidates can report to the podium. All at-large candidates.
But they're the at-large candidates, right?
Hmm.[1235.08]
Everyone take your seats. Can everyone hear me? Thank you, everyone, let's take your seats. Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and get started for the sake of protocol and time. Our at-large candidates. All right. Everyone should know the rules. Some of those rules will adjust, given time and opportunity. The opening statement. We'll provide 60 seconds for each candidate to provide who they are and why they are, all right? We're going to start that opener and I'm going to keep it simple. And here's what I'll do. I will start from my right and we will go to the left for the 60-second opening statement. Same rules apply, just to remind you, if you do mention a candidate that's on this stage by name or say something so specific that I absolutely know that you're talking about that person next to you, I will make sure they have an opportunity to respond or choose your answers wisely. We can continue.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Nkoyo Ephyong Lewis, teacher, attorney, mother, and I am running to be your next seat nine at-large representative. For nearly 20 years, I have been advocating unapologetically for equity and excellence in our schools. I've done that as a classroom teacher, making sure that my fourth graders left me ready for their next step. I've done that through coaching teachers to ensure they're using data to drive instruction and make meaningful progress. And I've done that as an attorney representing parents and students in special education and school discipline matters. I am here for this work, particularly because I have also sat in many of your seats as a parent, having to advocate for my own child who had special needs to get what he needs. And I am here to do that same work on behalf of all of our children in this cluster, so that every cluster, every classroom, and every child has an excellent education.
Tom, thank you. Yes.
Good evening. I am Jessica Johnson, your current APS at-large seat nine representative. Tonight, I stand before you, a third-generation educator, standing on the shoulders of the legacy of my grandfather, an ag teacher in Louisiana, and my mother, who just for fun happened to teach at my high school while I was there. I am the founder and executive director of a nationally-recognized nonprofit that has helped students claim more than $60 million in private scholarships for their education. And just to show my commitment, last month, I opened a college access hub so that students from any zip code can get one-on-one help with their financial aid process. Thank you so much. I look forward to you all getting to know me this evening.
Thank you.
Greetings, everyone. How are we?
Good.
Felt like the teacher voice worked. My name is Alfred Shively Brooks. I'm running to be the first active teacher to serve on the Atlanta Public School Board in its 150-year history. How many years?
150.
150 years. I think if we look at a hospital, and we said if that hospital wasn't working, we might ask our doctors and our nurses what was wrong with it, but we would never see a medical board without doctors, we would never see a nursing board without nurses, so I do not understand why we have school boards that do not have teachers on them. I'm running because I understand that teachers understand how to fix schools. And I'm here to make sure that the people who are making policies about are at the table to make sure that we get the best outcomes for our babies. If you want to know where we come from, if you want to know what teachers are all about, we all know when we drop our kids off and we see the work that we put in. And that is the kind of energy and effort that I'm going to be putting into serving as your next representative for Atlanta Public School Board, seat seven. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting me to this party. It's kind of fun. I'm Tamara Jones, and I am honored to be your current Board of Education representative for at-large seat seven. I was elected two years ago, and I'm running for reelection to serve a full four-year term. I've lived in Atlanta for more than 30 years, and I've worked for most of that time as an architect and urban planner. I have a bachelor's degree from Wake Forest and a master of architecture from Georgia Tech. I've been an APS mom for the past 17 years. My two oldest are graduates, and my youngest is a sophomore. Before being elected, I served over a decade in volunteer and appointed roles at the school cluster and district level, so I have a deep knowledge of this school system and its specific challenges. Right now, we have to shore up our basics. Graduation rates are high, but reading proficiency has hovered at 30% for nearly 20 years. We have to focus on teaching all children how to read using explicit methods. We need enough qualified staff in the schools, safe and welcoming learning environments, transportation that works, and nutrition foods that kids want to eat.
Thank you. Just a reminder, 60 seconds, unless that changes to 30, okay? All right, first question I will pose first to Jessica. Since June, the board has unanimously voted to, one, fire the superintendent, two, deny tapestry of schools serving students with unique learning needs, three, hire Dr. Battle as interim. The public generally does not know how their individual board representative has voted on either of them. I get those calls on my radio program all the time. How did so-and-so vote? Does the APS board, in your opinion, have a transparent voting process with the public? And would you advocate to make that process even more transparent to the general community in how?
Thank you for your question. So, one of the things that really had me excited about Dr. Battle coming on as our interim superintendent is that she started with two words that are personally important to me, accountability and transparency. And so, as we have adopted as a board this student outcome-focused governance model, one of our core principles and goals and guards really is really kind of sticking and making sure that we are transparent, our meetings are public. When we are meeting as a full group, those meetings are public. Our votes are also public, and you can find the record of those votes on the APS website in our Assembly profile. And so, there is a really solid commitment from everyone on the board to be as transparent as possible when it comes to our votes and our public discussions on matters such as the superintendent transition, such as the tapestry charter school, but also happily independently, my door is open if anyone wants to ask additional questions about why some of those decisions were made.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, same question.
Same thing with what Jessica said. All of our votes are public. With respect to the superintendent's evaluation, that's something that we've been talking about. There is a public-facing portion of the superintendent's evaluation that the public can see, so sort of the feedback that we've given to the superintendent. And when we came back out of the private session where we evaluated her, we did come back and report out some of the buckets that we had commented on. Oof, okay. But yes, I do promote transparency. I love the fact that Dr. Battle is focused on that, making sure that we make sure everybody knows. And one of the most important things, too, is to understand what our processes are. And so, I want to make that much more clear to the public, how the board actually operates, so people don't think we're just going off and making decisions in a vacuum. So, that's one thing I'm going to be working on, making sure on the board development committee that we have actual processes and rules that are public.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis.
So, I believe the question was about unanimous voting and the degree to which that affords the public transparency about the decisions that our board members are making. And I think for me, I think as an elected official, we owe our communities, we owe the people who have voted for us, the dignity of knowing how we are voting on issues that matter to them. And so, I would love to see the board operate with the courage of their convictions to share what their decisions are on matters where they are or are not necessarily unanimous. I think that is something that the public owes, is owed. I think that that is transparent, and that gives all of us the opportunity to make sure that we are continuing to put people in places that honor our voice and are willing to show their face in terms of how they've decided. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brooke.
Thank you for the question. I want to be very clear with everyone. We have a courage deficit on our current school board. And by this, I mean, when our board members decide to vote unanimously, essentially, they are hiding their intentions and they are hiding how they feel about different matters from the public. Now, they will verbally tell you after the vote, "I was in disagreement," or "this person was in disagreement," but we voted unanimously because we wanted to have cohesion among the board. And this has been a practice that has been at play since Karstoffen was in office. Now, I think we have to be very clear that now is a time when we need people elected who are courageous enough to tell you exactly how they feel about something. Otherwise, what is the purpose of electing people if the only thing they're going to do is hide how they really feel?
Okay, thank you. All right. This question. The primary role of the board is to hire, manage the superintendent. In the past 10 years, the board has hired and fired five superintendents, most of them current history. However, the board has largely operated the same, even as equity gaps continue to widen for all students. This week, the board voted to hire the same firm that hired Dr. Herring. Is the board accountable for the high superintendent turnover rate, was hindering the board from hiring the right superintendent? And Ms. Jones, I'll start with you with that question.
Sure. Well, when you talk about the five superintendents, that goes back to the early 2000s. So, just to make that clear.
Well, I said over the past 10 years.
It's been longer than that, but I do appreciate the question, though. One of the things that's keeping us from making, well, there's a lot of things, making those decisions, is the need to have a board that has continuity. We also don't have continuity of board members. We have people, you know, a lot of times, you know, people have used, school board is a political stepping stone, and for 20 years, we have nothing to show for it. And, you know, I do think that, you know, not coming together and being devoted and cohesive as a board and giving very clear direction and setting out a vision has been a hindrance to us maintaining continuity.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Brooke.
Thank you. I have a lot of issue with the process that we're undergoing with deciding on the superintendent. And I would first like to start with the issue I have with how we've decided to choose a search firm based upon a profile for a superintendent that comes from a board that will not be in office in just a few months. That's an issue. So, one of the main issues that we have problem with retaining and keeping a superintendent is that we do not have a shared vision between our school board and our superintendent. So, if you pick a search firm with a school board that is not picking the superintendent, then you're already setting the next school board up for failure. This is why I would call for our current school board to actually put a halt on deciding on the next search firm that we would select, because it's already putting bad blood into the process of what we're going to be doing moving forward. Many of you won't be here. You should not be picking who's going to be picking the next superintendent.
All right. Ms. Lewis.
I think what we have to bear in mind is that the role of a superintendent is a very challenging position. You're responsible for a number of things, and there are a number of relationships and practices, et cetera, that you have to hold. And so, I think as a board, there needs to be consensus around who is the person that we need now? What are the characteristics of that individual that will benefit APS as it is today? We're very comfortable talking about the 84% graduation rate, but we don't like to talk about the strong gaps that are there and the persistent gaps that predated COVID. We need a leader who is ready to live in the current reality and be bold and make decisive decisions for children and have the support and effective management of a board to hold that person accountable.
Thank you. Ms. Jessica Johnson.
Okay. So, I sit in this unique position as someone who was appointed to the board this past January to finish the last year of Jason Essevez's term. That puts me as an insider, but also technically an outsider. And so, I lean more on my experience as the founder of a nonprofit that I started in my dorm room at Howard University. And as the needs and expectations of my own organization has shifted over time, I made some good hires and I made a few mistakes, right? And so, as we look at what we're looking for in the next superintendent, it's my commitment to really lean on the expertise and the experiences of the public engagement part of our superintendent selection process to ensure that we get it right this time, because we absolutely cannot afford to get it wrong for our students.
Okay, thank you. So, you'll be first with this question. Politics is about who gets what and when. For APS, the board decides which kids get what and when through policies. The board spends roughly 60% of its $1.7 billion budget on adults, 40% on children. If elected, how will you ensure the district budget achieves, one, equitable resources to every student, and, two, schools that are funded before the central office is funded?
Yes, thank you for the question. This, for me, is one of the most pressing issues that we have in the city of Atlanta. So long as we divert the majority of our funds, 60% of every dollar, towards our central office, we will never be doing what we're supposed to be doing by kids. Y'all, I show up in a classroom every day as a high school teacher at Charles Drew. I teach high school economics, personal finance, and government. And I'm here to tell you that those six-figure people who wear suits and go to central office do very little when it comes to impacting what happens inside of our classrooms. Our kids deserve to have all of the resources available to them that are possible. Moreover, I have to say this. While I've adverted, I've definitely said that I do not run directly against Ms. Tamara Jones. Every time there's an opportunity to vote for something that would increase funding for more central office spending, she's done it. And when there was an opportunity to vote for an increase for teachers, she voted against it. When she had the opportunity to vote for more socio-emotional systems and programs for kids, she voted against it. More counselors voted against it. So, I'm here to tell y'all, if we want someone who's going to fix the spending, we got to go a new direction. Thank you.
Per the rules, you get 30 seconds to rebuttal.
Oh, rebuttal. Yes, I did vote against the budget, because I didn't feel like enough of the money had gone into the schools. It's been something that I've been arguing for the entire budget cycle during the period that we needed to be funding the schools first, making sure they were made whole, making sure their requests for security and safety, you know, measures were being honored. And it did not feel like when we got to the end that our requests as a board had been honored, and I voted no, because that's what you do when you don't agree with the board. I do agree with the teacher races. I do agree with the socio-emotional learning, but it was a matter of there's not enough into the school.
And I will, I'm sorry, she did not mention your name. Per the rules, I can't allow you to respond. You can use your time to respond when I come back to you. Original question to you about the money and how it's spent.
So, I'm not sure how people are riding at the 60/40. So, one other thing I do know about the budget after going through this cycle, we do have the $1.7 billion budget. After you take out the special revenue streams that we don't have flexibility to spend, you have roughly around $1 billion. Then you have about almost 30% of that gets paid off the top to charter partner schools and the unfunded pension that we inherited. And then, you know, then you start to uncover all the rest of it. And so, by my, by last year's budget calculation, the spend into schools is more like 60%, and the CLL is 40%, which is still way too high. It's still way too high. So, that's my experience with the budget.
All right, thank you. Ms. Lewis.
I think what's incredibly important when we're thinking about equitable resources and making sure that our schools are funding properly, is ensuring that we actually feel the value of the dollar. We can talk about all the numbers and how we're divvying them up and where they go, but do students actually feel the impact of them? Do our educators feel the impact of them? Are we spending money on programs, people, resources, that are actually going to lead to improved outcomes? If I were on the board, one of the things that I would want to be looking at as approaching the budget is how are we connecting the dots between the things that we are investing in and the actual student outcomes? Because as a board member in a school district, it is our charge to ensure that every single child in our care leaves with the skills that they are supposed to have. We are asking families and children to commit upwards of 10 years of their lives within our system. They should leave with a thing of value, and that means that we have to ensure that every single thing that we are spending on is actually driving towards an outcome that is beneficial for our students.
And Jessica.
So, before the pandemic, I actually had an opportunity to serve on the APS Equity Task Force. And one of the key items that we were really tasked is specifically naming the spots within our district where inequities were very, very glaring, right? And so, I'm really proud of that work that we did to name it, and then as now, in my board role, having the opportunity to challenge the district to do more in those spaces. And so, since my, in my robust, ah, sorry, can't talk, robust nine months, I've been able to really lean into my knowledge of federal budget management and compliance to ask the tough questions around what's happening with our budget, how those resources are being allocated, even how the student success funding model weights and poverty weights are being calculated, so that next year, when we are able to align our budget to our student outcome-focused governance, we can really lean in and push for more money to be distributed directly to schools, so principals can make the best decisions about the education of our students.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis, I'm going to start with you on this question. APS is the largest landowner in the city of Atlanta. Many of the properties are blighted. One is behind this very building. School enrollment continues to decline and is contextualized with birth rates. However, the blight remains in communities that have been historically divested. How will you work with colleagues on the school board to identify vacant properties, select community-backed development, and support the revitalization of divested neighborhoods with APS properties that are funded by taxpayers?
That's a wonderfully important question, because, as you mentioned, APS is one of the biggest landowners in this city. And we have communities that have needs and desires and wants. And we committed to these communities that we would listen to their voice, that we would allow them to have decision-making power, and that we would share governance. And we have, right now, an opportunity to listen to our community and make good on that promise that we have made. You asked how I would work with my board to ensure that we were doing just that. It would be having conversations and really activating the voices in the communities that have to live with the blighted buildings, right? Many of us are not living in those communities, and we should be putting at the forefront the voices of people who have to walk by those buildings, whose children have to encounter those spaces on a daily basis, and make reasoned decisions that are advantageous for all of us.
Thank you. Ms. Brooke, I'm going to go to you a second for that. Same question.
My home is just on the other side of the train tracks, literally. I remember when this parking lot used to be in front of a hollowed-out building, the space we're in now, with a basketball hoop outside, and kids would start shooting hoops until unfortunately, sometimes kids started shooting at each other. I remember what this neighborhood used to look like before this building was developed, where we have a coffee house, a sit-down restaurant, a spa, and event space for us to be having this conversation about how to move forward with education in Atlanta. When we have school board members who are willing to so hold on to particular properties that probably could be better used for more economic development in our communities, I think we have a real issue, a real disconnection. And I think we have some of us who want to play landlord as APS members. I think it's time for us, honestly, to have a real conversation about what to do with our surplus properties, so that we're better serving not only our kids in our schools, but also our communities, so that we can create a place that people want to raise families, so they will have children, so we can fill schools.
Thank you, sir. Jessica Johnson, same question.
Awesome. So, I think it is important for us to acknowledge that the district has not undergone a facilities master planning process in about 20 years. So, that predates all of the members, I believe, that are serving on our current board. Just yesterday, we met with administration, and there are now currently 16 properties that are in a pipeline to be used for affordable housing, to be used for workforce development, to be used for early learning opportunities. What we needed was to get an idea from administration what the process was, so that we can come back to the community and ask those hard questions about, and acknowledge where we may have created blight, and then ask the hard questions about, and then what happens next? What can we create next, so that more families have communities? I personally believe that schools should be community centers, and I look forward over the next few years to engaging with each of you to talk about what is best for your specific neighborhood, so that we can all really kind of collectively work towards the education of our youth.
Tom, Tamara.
This is something that I have worked on for a number of years, even before becoming on the board. I served on the SPOST Oversight Committee for many years. I'm an urban planner, so this really resonates with me. The one thing that I was trying to push for is to encourage the administration to come up with a process that's clear, that's transparent, that's public, so that everybody would know and the public would be involved. And so, what, like Jessica was saying, yesterday, we had a convening of the facilities master plan, where they were talking about our surplus properties. The key points that they did to protect the communities were to ensure that, number one, the communities would be contacted first and give their feedback, and then together, between APS and the community and any subject matter experts, you would pick what the use of the property would be ahead of time, and then issue an RFP to open it up to the public for proposals. For me, that ensures transparency, it gives voice to communities, it protects against political influence, and it's the definition of collaboration and solid process.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to have a follow-up question. 30 seconds for this follow-up. This is for everybody. And I will start with Ms. Lewis and just go down. Is your campaign formerly or currently financially supported by private developers in Atlanta?
My campaign is supported by people who share a vision of ensuring that all of our community members have a voice, that we are activating and elevating the educational outcomes for our students, and that we are doing that collectively.
so that we're better serving not only our kids in our schools, but also our communities so that we can create a place that people want to raise families so they will have children, so we can fill schools.
Thank you, sir. Jessica Johnson, same question.
Awesome. So I think it is important for us to acknowledge that the district has not undergone a facilities master planning process in about 20 years. So that predates all of the members, I believe, that are serving on our current board. Just yesterday, we met with administration, and there are now currently 16 properties that are in a pipeline to be used for affordable housing, to be used for workforce development, to be used for early learning opportunities. What we needed was to get an idea from administration what the process was so that we can come back to the community and ask those hard questions about and acknowledge where we may have created blight, and then ask the hard questions about, and then what happens next? What can we create next so that so that more families have communities? I personally believe that that schools should be community centers. And I look forward over the next few years to engaging with each of you to talk about what is best for your specific neighborhood so that we can all really kind of collectively work towards the education of our youth.
Tom. Tamara?
This is something that I have worked on for a number of years, even before becoming on the board. I served on the SPOST Oversight Committee for for many years. I'm an urban planner, so this really resonates with me. The one thing that I was trying to push for is to encourage the administration to come up with a process that's clear, that's transparent, that's public, so that everybody would know and the public would be involved. And so what, like Jessica was saying, yesterday, we had a convening of the facilities master plan where they were talking about our surplus properties. The key points that they did to protect the communities were to ensure that, number one, the communities would be contacted first and give their feedback. And then together, between APS and the community and any subject matter experts, you would pick what the use of the property would be ahead of time, and then issue an RFP to open it up to the public for proposals. For me, that ensures transparency. It gives voice to communities. It protects against political influence, and it's the definition of collaboration and solid process.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to have a follow-up question. 30 seconds for this follow-up. This is for everybody. And I will start with Ms. Lewis to just go down. Is your campaign formerly or currently financially supported by private developers in Atlanta?
My campaign is supported by people who share a vision of ensuring that all of our community members have a voice, that we are activating and elevating the educational outcomes for our students, and that we are doing that collectively together. If you share that vision, that is something that I am in alignment with. And I think that those people are the ones who are deciding today that they want to participate. Whether I have specific developers, that's not present currently, but I'm aligned with anyone who has a vision for making APS something that works for all of us.
Thank you. Jessica?
Thank you so much for for this question. So our campaign for the my to retain my seat as Atlanta Public School Board is public, and we did discover that within the last few days, actually, a developer has made a contribution, and my manager is actually in the process of refunding those specific donations so that I can honor my commitment to make sure that all community voices heard.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Brooke?
No, our campaign has not received any contributions from any developers. But what I will say is, we do have black developers who have been putting in work in Atlanta, who absolutely deserve an opportunity to be enfranchised in this city. And I will never, for the life of me, I will never run away from supporting our businesses here in Atlanta and making sure that they get a fair shake and opportunity to prosper and enterprise in this city. Thank you.
Ms. Jones?
Short answer is no. All of the people who donate to my campaign almost entirely are City of Atlanta voters.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Now, what we're going to do because of time, we're going to bridge question and answer to 30 seconds, okay? Rapid fire. And my first question will start with Ms. Jessica Johnson. All right. Based on Georgia Milestones data, black students, students with disabilities, and students that are economically disadvantaged are most likely, the most likely to perform below grade level in reading and math. Literacy proficiency or low income for low-income black students between grades three and eight hovers at about 8%. What is your bold vision to solve the challenges presented to these populations? What policies would bring equity to these groups by 2025?
Awesome. Thank you so much for this question. This is actually one of my favorite questions because all of us on the board are aligned with focusing on literacy and equity. I want to look at states like Mississippi that were able to jump up from almost the last on the list to number 21 by providing literacy coaches in every single school, by ensuring that every single English and language arts teacher in K through eight was actually trained on the science of reading and structured literacy, and by really investing additional funds. They put $14 million in summer literacy camps, and I think we can absolutely do that for APS students.
Thank you. Oh, Tamara?
Yes. Something I've been working on with the Policy Committee is actually developing a board policy around literacy. I think that this is extremely important, and I do want to thank Equity and Education, you know, some of the collaboration we had a year ago to talk to some folks out in Oakland, California, about how we could construct a policy around literacy at a board level that stays within board territory but guides the kind of and methods of instruction and materials that our children are being taught how to read with, because we don't, we currently have a lot that are not supported by the science of reading.
Thank you. Lewis?
I've spent nearly seven years as a special education attorney, representing families when they did not get the services that their children needed or were legally entitled to. And so this is an area that is particularly important to me. When I was teaching, literacy was one of the most important skills that I believed I could teach and provide to my students. And so I think we need a policy that's in place. I think we need to make sure that it is activating research-based interventions when we see that students are beginning to fall behind, and that there's true accountability and follow-up so students don't sit in a process without any real outcome that moves them forward.
Thank you. Ms. Brooke?
If our kids can't read, our kids can't learn. I firmly believe that by the third grade, every child in the city of Atlanta should have the right to read on grade level. And we have to be serious about this. And there's going to be a multifaceted, comprehensive approach, and we're going to have to be able to get this done. Because of a lot of this has to do with our relationships between our families and what they're providing to their children between the ages from the cradle to the age of five. And it makes a huge difference, which means that we're going to have to support our families to have access to books, access to programming, access to libraries, access to more enrichment. And we're going to have to take care of the adult literacy as we have in the city as well. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I want to open it up Q and A with the audience. Someone from Equity and Education should have a microphone. Raise your hand. Somebody will get to you. To the candidates and elected officials, 30 seconds for response. Same rules apply. If you reference someone specifically, they will have 15 seconds this time at rebuttal.
All right, we're over here this way. We're going to have a student pose the first question.
And just a reminder, you can ask a specific question to a specific candidate or however many you choose, or everybody on the panel.
Okay, this is a question for everybody. My name is Morgan Harden. So I don't think anybody even knew about this meeting for real. Well, not further than the people that are in this room, maybe a little bit more. But I feel like more people should know about these kind of meetings. I didn't even know that there was a super intent, well, whatever. I didn't even know that this was a thing for real. I knew it was APS board, but we don't know any of the people who are on the board. Those people aren't coming out to our schools or anything to talk to us or have meetings with the students and stuff. Most of the people that are talking would be parents and stuff, and parents wouldn't have the full perspective that we have because we're the ones sitting in the seats in the classes.
Yeah. I think that's a great point. Presence, accessibility, connection is what the amazing scholar was saying. So what would a school board member do to enhance that communication barrier? And I will just start this way and work down.
One of the best things that we've done in recent years is to have a student advisory council, which really advises directly to the board. And growing out of that, that council recommended that we do what they call breakfast with the board. So we go to each high school every year, and the students get to post questions, you know, give us comments. I have learned so much from those interactions with the students on the ground, from things like people, you know, not having their religious beliefs accommodated to, you know, inequities in athletics, to, you know, having complaints about the SEL curriculum. I mean, it just goes on and on and on. And what it does is it enables us then to center ourselves in the student voice and to use that when we go back to create policy. And we have.
All right. I'm going to suspend normative rules for the student. Go ahead and just answer the question or provide insight as to how that communication barrier can be knocked down, kicked down for students.
Yeah. First, I want to say thank you, Morgan. I'm proud of you. As I saw you standing in the hallway, you were disengaged, and I came up to you in the hallway, and I challenged you to ask a question to the candidates up here, and you did. So I hope everyone here gives a round of applause to this lady, even if it takes up my time. Morgan is a student at Kip. If you look in this audience, you'll see some folks wearing blue shirts, and many of them are some of my current students and some of my former students alike. Our campaign is powered by young people. And what I notice is, no one listens to the young people. Unfortunately, the adults tend to center themselves instead of de-center themselves so that we can get to doing the business for our young people. And what I know is this, if you want to know what school board members will do, you have to look at what they have done. And so if you look into this crowd, you'll see young people who I taught how to swim at our YMCA's, are taught how to play baseball over at Prior, are taught in a high school over at Drew, or our substitute taught them at Wesley. You see what people have done by where they've been. I've always been a part of our community. I will continue to be a part of our community, and I will ensure you that we will no longer have school board members who you cannot name or point out when you see them in a grocery store.
So before joining the board, as the founder of the Scholarship Academy, I actually had an opportunity to serve in almost every single APS high school, designing what we call Financial Aid Immersion Experience for students, training college advisors how to directly connect students to local and state-based money. They actually have a stronger chance of winning. I really think as a board, we take the leadership of the superintendent. And so our interim superintendent has visited 19 schools in her first two weeks on the job. And I think that is something that we all need to lean into more. I've had an opportunity to go to the breakfast with the board that Tamara mentioned. But also, I got a chance to see the Verizon Innovation Lab and see the excitement of our students and how students and corporate partners can really come together and create a yearning for learning that I hope spreads across the entire district. So thank you for your question. Thank you for the challenge, and I'm up for the challenge. Tell me when I can come hang out.
Thank you, Morgan, for coming up here and asking such an important question. So I think in the work that I have done, particularly representing students, especially in school discipline matters, what I hear from them a lot of times is that their voice is not listened to, it's not heard, it's not activated. And sometimes it is manipulated in ways that are not to their advantage. And so as your next board member, it is my commitment to not only be present, but to make sure that information is not solely housed at the central office, that the only opportunity for you to engage is not if you show up and get in on time to write your name down for public comment. I think we have an amazing opportunity to leverage social media and all the different ways that our scholars are innovating and creating and to connect with them. And so it'll be my goal to be listening to students, to be activating, actually asking them to come to the table and tell us how best we can support them. Because ultimately, this school system is designed for you. It should be. That is the goal, is to make sure that each one of our children are leaving in a better position than we were. It is not for the people who are already educated. And so for those of us who are in the pursuit of making sure that you get to live your full potential, it is my goal to listen to you and to show up in the spaces and ways that make you being a part of this process easier and more accessible.
Thank you for that question. All right.
Hi, I'm Zach Murray. I'm Chair of the Lakewood High Community Association. I just want to thank you all for being here tonight in our neighborhood, and thank Ali for hosting this board forum. I have two quick questions. It's one thing to say that you're not support, you're not taking developer dollars. Okay, really quick, not taking developer dollars, but can you make the same commitment to not accept corporate PAC dollars, you know, the so-called uncovered money? Is that a commitment you can make tonight, including the Village PAC? And then we have purpose-built elementary schools here, and charters only exist in the poor parts of town, and they have not improved results. So what do you say about charter schools and the expensive contracts, the lack of teachers' unions and things like that that comes with that? Are you committed to restoring the public sector and the public schools? Or do you, will you continue to support charter schools?
All right. We'll start this way. Ms. Lewis, go down.
Of course. So I'll say my commitment is always to make sure that wherever a child is in school, that we are delivering to them excellence. The reality in our school system, and something that I face as a parent every day, is that we are not producing the outcomes for students that are compelling. And we have to make sure that we are doing something to build back the trust of our community that APS can and will educate every single child. I think every parent has to make a decision about what is best for them and what they think is best for their child. And ultimately, we have to make a, we have to do the work to ensure that APS traditional schools, charges, whatever they are, are the best option for our families.
Thank you.
So at the beginning of our time this evening, Anthony Wilson asked us all to remember one number, and that number is 54,000. As a current board member, it is my responsibility, is our responsibility to ensure the education of all 54,000 students in our district. Now, approximately 15,000 to 17,000 of those students do happen to be in the charter school network. And so it is my responsibility to ensure that no matter what the cluster, no matter what the school, no matter, you know, who's on the go team, all of those students are getting the resources they need to be successful.
Thank you.
Like many of the folks in the room, my family has had experiences across the gambit in the city of Atlanta. My son Bryce, 16, whom many of you know, unfortunately, we lost last spring break, attended elementary school at Eastlake. And I saw what happened when Charles Drew Charter came, and unenrollment happened at Mass. And next thing you know, there's no school anymore. I also know what it looks like to see families invest in a place like a Wesley International and separating a for-profit entity over that charter school, making sure that you have a nonprofit board to govern it, putting it into a school that would be blighted otherwise and making change. I think we can do both. I think we can do all.
Thank you. Yes.
I agree with Jessica that all 54,000 or so students are all of our students, and we are responsible for them. One thing that about Atlanta that is unique is that we have the most charter schools of any school district in the state of Georgia, and we have a lot of opportunities for choice. All of our traditional schools, except for, I think, five, are also open for choice transfers for people who want to, you know, wants a different solution. And then those five are overcrowded.
Tom. We have time. We're already over, okay? We have time for two more questions on record. What I encourage all candidates to do is to stay and answer everybody's questions. And what I would like to do, if you're in line, I want to move you up here if you don't get your question answered during the forum, so that you can be the first to get your question answered directly. We got time for two more on record.
The operational definition of equity that I have is the utilization of the funding that you have for all 54,000 of your students. I'm not pro-choice schools. I'm not pro-charter schools, because those schools are paid before public schools and my teachers. So I've been an advocate for 15 years. I've been through about five superintendents, and I'm positive that Dr. Battle is a remedy for what we have. The problem has been for those terms, the school board themselves. So I would like to hear from you, particularly because earlier this year, we had a problem with zoning, where the school board decided to zone the schools, displacing African-American students and Hispanic students without the consent of the public. And you presented this information to us. I would like to know specifically and particularly how you plan to ensure that, of course, over a decade, the children that cannot read after the third grade and now in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, how are you going to equip those schools with the resources so that those kids can learn how to read, and that you can equip the teachers with the things that they need? Because it's not the teachers that need training, it's actually the resources that the Board of Education has failed to give the teachers for the training that they need, and specifically the African-American community and the Hispanic community.
All right. Thank you. We'll start here, go down.
Sure. I agree. I agree that we haven't put enough resources in the schools. Again, that's why I voted against the budget. I'm totally in support of you. The teachers need to have the resources they need to do their own jobs. You had several other questions in there. And I think one of them was talking about the effects of different schools on other school enrollments and things like that. Yes. And so, you know, all the choices that we make affect other people. Like, you can't do one thing without it having ripple effects to other things. So we have to look at it in totality when we make decisions. We have to examine the effects of one choice on another population.
All right. Tom?
2011, I moved into my home in Custom McDonough, Gies, and at the time, we were in the throes of the whole redistricting thing that we were just dealing with earlier this year, which is where you and I first started talking. And at that time, they were trying to close down Benteen Elementary School because they said it had low enrollment. And if anybody knows me, you know I worked in the southeast corner knocking doors by myself with my family to keep Benteen Elementary open by rezoning Custom McDonough, Gies into Benteen. And now it's sustainable and it's just been renovated. That's the kind of work that I do. But let me talk about this problem that we have here, because while my opponent talks about making sure that we got more money to our schools, she was making sure that there was more money to the non-title one schools, not all of our schools. And let's have some clarification on that.
All right. Go ahead and respond.
Yes. So what I was arguing for was that we fully fund through our student success funding formula what it takes to actually educate kids within a building. So we have to use our formula to meet the minimum standards of service that we have defined, you know, as a board and as a district. And so what we have found is that in many cases, you know, that money is not sufficient to cover the basic standards of service. And so my argument is that we start first with the basic standards of service, fund the schools first, and then layer the extra help on top.
Thank you.
Do I get to respond at all?
No.
Okay.
No. Yes.
So thank you so much for your question. I genuinely believe that education is a community affair. And one of the reasons that the cluster model was established was to keep communities intact. And so I definitely resonate with the with the desire to to have transparency around zoning conversations. That's something that we have to own as a district. There should have been conversations with your community to discuss whether or not there were overcrowding, if there are options, or can we innovate, right? As an entrepreneur, I'm always saying, how can we be more innovative to solve some of those challenges?
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
We have to get to the place of recognizing why we've created, how our lack of being equitable has continued to exacerbate these problems. And I love your point that it is not that teachers need training, it's that they need the resources, and they need to have a seat at the table to design the solutions. It's my belief that the people closest to the problem are usually the ones that have the best solutions. They typically don't have the agency support and resources. We went to a cluster model to bring down more agency support and resources.
We went to a cluster model to bring down more agency support and resources to the school level, and we need to make sure that we are allowing our principals to be their leaders and our teachers to be the professionals that they are, day in and day out.
We have time for one more on record question.
Thank you all for your time tonight. So we've talked a lot about literacy in general terms. There was a specific question about it, and a little bit of specifics on the answer in terms of coaching and the science of reading, but I'm hoping for some more specifics, so I'm going to ask a very specific question, just to kind of get into it a little. You all are the ones that are going to make some big decisions about the systems that we actually use, so I'm hoping to understand how in the weeds you are with those details. So where do you stand on Fountas and Pinnell, F and P, as a, Fountas and Pinnell as a tool, as a system, as a curriculum for reading in K through second?
Okay. Jessica, we'll start with you on that one.
I couldn't understand what you were saying.
Okay.
So Fountas and Pinnell, the standard reading curriculum that is, okay.
Awesome. Thank you so much. So let me make sure that I express that it is not the role of the board to get into curriculum and content. It is our board, our responsibility, to set the policies around it, to listen and be advocates when parents are expressing that maybe some of our curriculum choices are not actually being impactful. And so what I would say is we're committed to leaning into the science of reading. That particular curriculum content is not something that I'm an expert in, but I think that it would be, really behoove our leadership team within the administration to evaluate. I know Organ Gillingham is something that has been proven to work, and that science of reading, and so we would lean towards what research says.
Tamara.
I am familiar with Fountas and Pinnell. It is, according to the science of reading, it is not supported by that science, particularly their leveled literacy interventions and the three-queuing and the different interventions that they teach kids to sort of guess at words. But again, we don't pick the curriculum. What we can do is create a policy that shapes, you know, the kind of body of research that the district has to use. We don't have to throw out the books, you know, but we do need to dictate or guide the kind of research-based interventions.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks.
We really have to get back to focusing on phonics. We've tried so many different things to make a simple thing very complex, and I think it's time for us to really get back to the roots. Truth be told, like at my school, we use Achieve 3000, and we see some of the effects that it has on our learners. But to be honest with you, even Harvard studies show, students learn how to read better when they physically hold books, and I don't know if everything that we've done to make these leaps into the digital world is necessarily bearing out to be beneficial for our kids. Perhaps it's time for us to get back to old school, actually having physical books in our schools, and being more intentional about having more literacy immersion during the school day.
Ms. Lewis.
Absolutely, and I think it's very important that we are putting the people in place who can have that detailed and specific conversation about what works in terms of teaching people to read now. And I agree that the role of the board is to make sure that we are setting policy, that there is actually a policy around literacy in our district because of where our literacy rates are. And as someone who loved teaching reading and was able to help my students grow years in one, it is important that we are putting the tools and the resources in the hands of people who have to go every day to do that, and that we are doing what is foundational. Brain science says that most students, if they are given effective instruction, will learn to read, and we need to make sure that we are delivering effective instruction.
Thank you. I want to do this. Everyone who's in line, if you would move right here for me. To everyone on stage, they are your priority when we end tonight, because they have burning questions. We just are simply out of time. I was a foster kid. I was adopted by a school teacher. She still teaches in DeKalb County School to this day. Because of her, I became a school teacher. I'm a college professor. I teach physics. I understand the importance and equalization of education. So I'm going to add 15 seconds to your 60-second closing. To just touch on, how are you making an intentional effort to hear from students and teachers? Or what would you do to make an intentional effort to hear from students and teachers who are in those classrooms every day? And I want to start with Ms. Lewis.
My campaign is actually fueled by educators. I taught. I came to Atlanta specifically to teach, but I taught in a classroom that is very different than the classroom our teachers are facing today. And so for me, it is very important that I am surrounded by people who are veterans in the game, people who are newer in the practice, so that we keep the commitment around ensuring that our educators are helping to activate what we are choosing to do in our schools. What I found when I was teaching is that as an educator, I often wasn't asked about what the solutions were in the classroom that I showed up to every single day. And it is my commitment to be a board member that is listening to both our educators and our students. And I highlight that because as an attorney that had to sit with students when they were facing discipline, who had to sit with families when their kids were not getting what they were needed and were not being treated well, I know that there's more to the story than sometimes what comes home on a write-up. And so it is important that we are activating those voices and supporting them so that they can continue to show up every day and deliver excellence as teachers and students, learning in a process that is iterative and requires us to be willing to learn, to grow, and to change.
Thank you. Tamara Jones.
So is this like the final?
Yes, closing, yes.
Okay. So two years ago, I had a choice. I could have run for my district seat, but I ran for citywide because some of the more critical issues that we face as this district and where I can best contribute are things that are systemic and touch everyone and are not specific to any one part of the city. We have to build this kind of solid policy and organizational process in order to move equity forward. This process has to outlive individual board members and superintendents. That infrastructure also has to bridge over into the city and county governments and outlive council members and mayors, because APS can't meet our children's wraparound needs alone. And doing that involves much more than just knowing people. I am fully committed to being present and available, doing this work for our children. This is my pinnacle and not my stepping stone. At this point in APS, we need experience, so I'm asking to be re-elected for a full four-year term to continue the work to build a transparent and collaborative culture that nurtures a city of well-supported readers. As far as giving people their voice, I think we have an opportunity to learn from the city's NPU system, to actually put structures in place that empower the voices of students and teachers for generations to come.
Tom, thank you. Mrs. Jessica Johnson.
As a third-generation educator, this work is truly personal for me, and I don't have to talk about what I would do to hear from teachers and educators. Over the last few months, what people have learned about me is that I show up and I listen, and those are the two most important qualities. In every school, every community meeting, I've asked two questions: What's working and what's needed? And that's going to be my commitment over the next four years. As your APS at-large Seat Nine representative, I look forward to really providing solid governance, leadership, and financial oversight to ensure that our students are eager readers and learners. I want to make sure that our staff are both supported and trained, and our commitment to position every student, regardless of their zip code for college careers, is our true commitment across the district. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Mr. Brooks.
I believe the question was about how we would be able to center the voices of teachers and students and our families. And I think you have to start with actually electing a teacher, a parent, and a community member who you know is active. Now, I love it that the criticism lobbed against me is that I know people, but I think part of listening to people is that you have to know people. Part of talking to people is that you have to know people. Part of knowing what is wrong, what needs to be better, what the best practices are, how we can get differences is about knowing people. Knowing people is also how we build bridges, actual bridges. Knowing people is how we get change. Knowing people is how we circumvent the different levels of government so that we can get change on the things that we cannot control on this board. Knowing people is why this board is going to be much more successful when I'm elected this coming October 16th, when early voting starts, this coming November 7th, when Election Day happens, because Atlanta knows that it is time for us to make sure that boys in Atlanta have someone on the board who looks like their dad. It's time for change. 150 years, not one active teacher served on this school board. That ends in 2023. Vote for Brooks. Thank you.
Tom. Let's give all of the candidates a round of applause. We are thankful for your service and commitment to public office.
I want to thank everybody for coming today. We greatly appreciate it. Get ready for the next debate. Please come back to the building. Again, thank you for showing up to a very wonderful, wonderful debate. Hello, quickly, how y'all doing? Good. Did y'all enjoy that? All right. So get your candidates, they'll be here chatting for a little bit, but we wanted to give you some quick instructions before you leave. This is Tiffany Fick, our Director of School Quality and Advocacy.
Good evening, everyone. We are incredibly grateful for the turnout tonight. I was able to talk to many of you, and there's one call to action that we have before you leave. As you may know, school board is the only thing that will be on the ballot this upcoming election, and so in order to remind folks about this election and increased voter turnout, we're asking you to grab a pledge card, if you haven't already, on that back table, and fill that out. We will send out reminders, texts, et cetera. Take extra to give to your community members, your neighbors, your friends, and then ultimately, we're just super excited for your participation tonight, and we hope to see you October 16th through November 7th at the polls. Thank you.
Well done. That was good. Your second-to-last answer was really good.[1501.71]